It is six thirty, April fifteenth. This is a regular city council meeting of the Arlington City Council. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel, I'll be presiding at the meeting. Welcome everyone, and I'll call the meeting to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, welcome everyone. This time we'll do the roll call. Councilmember Cowell.
Here.
Councilmember Highland.
Here.
Councilmember Hattleston.
Here.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Here.
Councilmember Batchard.
Here.
All members present, also at the table at my left is City Administrator Pat Melvin, and my right, City Attorney Ross Arneson. With us in the audience this evening, we have a number of guests, and I'm guessing some of you want to speak to the council when that time comes, which will be in a few minutes, so we'll just do that, and I'll have you identify yourself as you approach the microphone.
And just a reminder, there is a sign up sheet out there. If you would please sign in, we'd appreciate it.
Yeah, we would appreciate all the guests sign in. Thank you. The approval of the agenda, I do have one change to the agenda, and that is Item B under Consent Agenda would be scratched. It'll be taken up at a future meeting. Okay, and then also there is an addition in the back. Item fourteen would be added, I believe, maybe. There are some agendas out there that don't have this. Item fourteen reads, "Approve or deny contracting with Flawless Finish LLC to paint the Arlington Library," and that has been added. Item fourteen on a new business. Okay. All right, we have a swearing in to do this evening. We have a new patrol officer for the city of Arlington, and at this time I would ask Bailey Halasic to come forward. This is our photo op corner, so. Raise your right hand, please. I, Bailey Halasic.
I, Bailey Halasic.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Charter of the City of Arlington.
And the Charter of the City of Arlington.
And to discharge fully the duties devolving upon me.
And to discharge faithfully the duties devolving upon me.
As police officer for the City of Arlington.
As a police officer in the City of Arlington.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yep, one copy is provided for you, and then we'll move on to one.
Welcome. Thank you.
Would you like to get a picture of the full council?
Sure.
Sure.
And then if you're off with your family?
We're going to see if this year. Want to sign?
Yep, yep.
Life's good. What do we got?
I'll post her out. She needs to be the top of the pyramid.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, me too.
You're gonna have to try to get tighter than that, I think.
Maybe one more over my top.
Where am I going?
Right there.
Did you see?
Where are we looking at?
Okay.
Now, would Bailey's family like to come up and get a picture?
Whoop. Excuse me, excuse me.
Which turn?
No, one more here.
Couple more.
Third wave.
Great smiles, all right.
Very good.
Thanks. All right, we move forward to the consent agenda. Again, Item B has been scratched, so the consented is...
Right, we have to approve the agenda personally.
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't do that. We, I'm sorry, thank you. Motion to approve the agenda with noted changes.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the changes?
Second.
Councilmember Batchard made the motion to approve the agenda with the changes. Councilmember Hattleston second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carried. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item five, consent agenda this evening consists of the following items. Approval of the March eighteenth, twenty nineteen city council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the bills. Item C, authorized hiring of Kenneth Perschow and William Rao as seasonal mowers. Item D, approval of the temporary onset liquor license for Sibley County Agricultural Association for May seventeenth and eighteenth of twenty nineteen.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchard, second by Councilmember Yashewski to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carried. All right, we've come to the part of the meeting now where I'll invite, if anyone wants to speak to the council, we give five minutes, and if there's multiple persons interested in speaking on the same subject, I would ask that you either select a spokesperson or just speak, you know, that multiple people don't speak on the same subject with the same details. So at this time, the Brinkmans are here. Howard and Brandon. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
When I got hired here, I was asked if I knew how to play baseball about forty-seven years ago, and I said no, but I still got hired. But I didn't get my picture taken. So this is awesome.
You should have.
We're here to thank the council for voting down this zoning board issue that we had. I think it would really put a bind on a lot of us that have rentals in this town. So we're here to thank you guys for doing this. I did get the video of the zoning board meeting the other night, and my conclusion of that is, seems like there's nobody to communicate between everything, you know, between the EDA board, the council, and the zoning board. And I know, Michelle, I'm sorry for you taking all the slack for a lot of that stuff, but sometimes Michelle's got kids to take care of. Some meetings don't get made by her. It's like with all of us, we don't have time to do a lot of the things that we need to do. So I apologize as a citizen of this city to you for taking all the slack. Anyway, my thing is, is that I think the council should look at Amy Newsom. She's on the EDA board, she comes to the council meetings, and I think she would be a good place on the zoning board if you hire her. Could be on all three. She would fill in a lot of the questions that everybody needs. I really do. I think she's a, I called her this morning, we got someone that's interested in our building. I called her this morning about some, I left her a message, called me back about an hour later, and I told her, I says, is there any grants out there for us to do this, this, and this? By two o'clock this afternoon, she had two grants. She wants to talk to us on Friday about it. She's a breath of fresh air. She is awesome. I've only met her, what, twice now? And, but I think you need someone on all three that will communicate. I don't think you have to leave it up to Michelle just because she's a council member to take it all back to everybody. Like I said, some meetings you don't make, and sometimes you forget. I mean, I know I am. So anyway, that's what I want to say to you guys. Thank you, and that's my recommendation to the council.
This won't take much time. I want to say thank you again, and also the whole fact of, if we do revisit this in twelve to eighteen months, like we talked about tabling it, I did talk to a bunch of tenants and landlords in the city, and there was a kind of a consensus of if something went wrong or they couldn't negotiate something with their own landlord, the tenant could pay the fifty dollars, have the inspector come in, inspect the unit, and if he found something, then within thirty days the landlord had to pay back the fifty dollars to the tenant, plus make the fixes appropriate within those thirty days as well. That's just a suggestion if we come, when we come back to that again, so. That way, we're not invading privacy and so on and so forth. But that's all I had. Thank you guys very much.
Yes, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who would wish to address the council this time? Just for the record, and for TV land out there, if somebody's watching, they may not know you people, but if you could just say your name and...
Dan Hislop.
D. Check.
Dave Jack.
Welcome.
We appreciate being here, and to start out, I thought V would give us a little background on Howard Group Forum, and then I'll go on from there.
Okay. Well, a few years ago, Pope Francis had written the document La Data Si, on care for our common earth home. And we were encouraged to study it and read it, and we formed a group out of Saint Miriam, and studied that document, which is an excellent, an excellent review, an excellent example of where we are in Planet Earth, in our relationship with Planet Earth. And the following, and I should also say that we talked with one of the Lutheran pastors, Zion Lutheran, and she offered us her document, and we studied that too. And that's also a very good document. And I would guess that all the churches have documents on care for the environment to end our earth home. Following the study of that, we felt that we weren't finished. This called us into action. What can we, how can we express with action our relationship with Planet Earth? How can we help restore and renew? And so that gives you some background, and from here, I'm going to give it to Dan.
And we decided that we needed to act locally.
Could you use the microphone, please?
Yep, there you go. We decided that we needed to act locally, and we brainstormed a number of ideas that we thought we could implement in Arlington. One of which is the project that we're going to propose to you tonight, which is a trailside wildflower project. You should have a packet on that, which you can read in detail. We, to give you an overview, we noted that we have an excellent trail leading from Arlington out to the Sportsman's Park, which requires quite a bit of mowing each year. We noted that you hired two mowers tonight. And one of the things that we thought we could do would be to develop a wildflower trail in that area to cut down on mowing, save the city money. Also, it would help pollinators, which are critical to local agriculture. There are a number of other advantages as well. So we began planning what we could do. We got some partners, the FFA Sibley East through Tim Ullenkamp and Stephanie Brandt, the advisors. And we also met with Larry Guiziki, who is very close to being, getting his designation as a master gardener for Arlington. Presently, I think he's considered an intern, but he's very, very close. So, we met with the FFA, and they were very excited about doing this. They will basically provide all the materials, develop the trail over a number of years, and just keep it going. We're to the age where me, we may not see the end of this project, but we would sure be proud to be part of it as it develops. What we're asking for initially is permission to put tarps down in three areas along that trail. They have to be full sun areas, and two of them would be proposed on the east abutment of the bridge going over Highland Creek. Those areas are already difficult to mow because of the elevation, so I think the mowers would probably appreciate not having to get in there with machinery. But they're both full sun, they'd be ideal, they'd set off the bridge, they'd be a place that people would really notice as they walk through the area. The third pod would be when a dog legs by the brow home there on that trail leading up to the county road, that's all full sun on the east side of it, not on the side where the brow house is, but the other side. So the idea would be that the FFA would put out tarps, which they would get from area farmers, according to Tim, put it down, cover it with compost, which we'd like to get from the city of Arlington. The reason for the compost would be to hold it down so that when the mowers go over it, and they would have to do that periodically to keep the weeds from getting over twelve inches high, after the second year, the area would take care of itself. It's a mixture of native grasses and wildflowers. And then in the springtime, the area would be planted. There'd also be some planting this fall of certain species. When the planting takes place, the FFA would then move the tarps to three new areas along that area leading back up to the county road. So it would work its way back toward the county road. Hopefully, a few years down the road, maybe turn and head back toward Arlington and become a very spectacular trail. Now, wildflower areas take a while to develop, three years. So it would be, it shouldn't be judged by the first year's operation. Also, I've spoken to people who have these in the area, and they say that certain flowers will rest and develop in different years, so it's always changing. The other thing we would like you to consider doing, if you're supportive of this, is consider putting signage up, that says something like the FFA Wildflower Trail. Doesn't mean it's still not the city of Arlington's walking trail, but you're recognizing the work for this organization over the years, because they're going to put some time into it and some money into it. If there are costs involved in this, the FFA also says that they're eligible for grant money. So we think that the role of city would be to provide us with mulch or compost to keep that tarp down so it doesn't get into the mower. And the other thing would be maybe with some signage or permission to do the signage. And let's see if I, there anything major that I've missed here? That's basically it. It would be a Midwestern grass/wildflower blend. That's our proposal, I think, in a nutshell. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Wow, it sounds very, it sounds really, really great. I like the idea. The tarps, you just mentioned tarps. I mean, are we talking about long, narrow tarps? Any idea what the, you know, what the dimensions would be, would they?
I don't.
Okay.
The only thing I know is, Tim said, we can get those easily from area farmers. I guess they use a lot of that stuff in their work. And he said it wouldn't be a problem, but I don't know the exact dimensions. Originally, we talked about like ten by twenty feet per pod, but that could vary depending on what's available.
Do you know when they're hoping to do the start?
Would need to be done in the next couple of weeks. And the reason for that is, it's recommended that the tarps be put over the area for a minimum of six months. And that's sort of why we came tonight in a hurry, because we're realizing that six months will take us to the end of October if they get started now. And the idea there is that you're killing all the present vegetation in the area. And the compost would be put on that area, and we do understand there are still seeds in there that will grow, but the mowing should take care of that over the first two years. And the mowing itself is not more than you're doing now. In fact, it would be less, because you would only have to mow if the area got twelve inches or higher. I don't know how often they mow now, but I'm guessing they try and keep it lower than that.
Is, at the start, is there any watering needs?
No.
For these farm, okay.
Down the road, there may be some burning involved with wildflowers, but that's pushed out a few years.
So you're just basically looking for permission to use that area for the planting?
Yes.
You're not looking for several thousand dollars from the city to ill-fund it or anything?
No. No, this is a...
This is pretty easy enough, Mayor.
Sounds like an awful easy one.
This is a win-win for everybody.
I would agree, it'd look awful nice out there, awful nice.
Like I said, the only thing we would like would be transport some mulch down just to, or not the wood chips, but the actual compost to hold things down.
Very exciting.
Mm-hmm. All right, well, this is something we will discuss a little later, and I would venture to say, not going on the limb, that it will be approved, but...
Yeah, that would be wonderful, and we would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Great idea. Anyone else at this time wish to address the council? Have a chair.
Hello, Amy.
Hello.
Identify yourselves, please.
Amy Berger and Bailey Gakes. Move on, 124 Henderson Road. And this is what we look like when we've been kept up all night long by our dog food plant. And I've talked several times with Pat, and he suggested that I maybe just bring it here and see what their, what our progress may be as to what we're, our steps are, if they've updated us on anything. Last night, from ten to ten-thirty, it was off, and then it was back on. It was on and off five times last night, so I have not slept. I have a partner at home with MS who had to go to the ER. So it's really, really starting to kick our butts in my hole. And we're just asking where we're at with it, and what the city's plans are as old.
Give the update, why don't you give the update right now?
We just got word today, you know, we have an understanding with Northland Dry. We're asking for them to provide us with updates every two weeks. And I just heard today that the silencer has arrived. That's something that they've been waiting on. They have the motor, which is located outside. They have about fifty percent of that enclosure completed. So that's where we're at today. We did have a meeting scheduled for this last week. Unfortunately, due to the, to the snow, we canceled that, but there are a number of individuals who are going to be sitting down, meeting, and talking about what happens if they do not comply with the deadline, so that if, if there still is a problem, that we can address it right away and go from there. So we are being proactive and trying to put together a strategy in terms of how to deal with it right away, should it not meet our requirements, which we've shared with Northland Dry.
Yep. Oh, you and I have had several conversations, Michelle and I have too. And I apologized to Michelle too. She kind of takes the wrath from me because of her family. So kind of yell at each other, I yell at her a lot for it too, but it's just been... Last night was just over the top again, so I just wanted to come in and touch base, so that it continually stays in front of you guys, so you know that the concern is out there. I'm getting emails constantly from people, but they just don't want to come in. I don't know why they don't want to all appear here as a group. I think we'd be better if we did it in numbers than one at a time, but I just want to make sure it stayed on the agenda, and we knew we were on top of it. And we knew as a community through the TV broadcasts that you guys are going to stand behind that May fourth deadline, and that there are going to be consequences to that.
Correct, yeah.
That's right.
We apologize for, you know, for lacking sleep.
I know, everything takes time, we've been dealing with this for a long time. Last night was just, if they're having problems, I don't know why they don't just shut down and do it during the day when everybody's up and moving around. It was five times last night, on and off, and on and off, and on and off.
That's probably worse than having it on and off.
Exactly, last night was the worst since, obviously, since they moved here.
Oh, we've had a couple good nights where it's been...
But the on and off was really, really difficult last night. Stacy's probably sleeping now at home, so it was...
And we've been told that when the manager's there, he cranks it up by the manager, and he's there at night, so it's...
He has the ability to turn it up to a higher, even higher frequency.
So he does that when he's there, so it's, it makes it... I just got out of bed, like just got out of bed. I didn't even get dressed, not even lie, because I'm going home and going right back to bed, praying that I can get some sleep before tonight, because Lord knows I might not get done. So, we're just zombies. It puts you in such a state of mind that you just can't even function. Like, I was making breakfast for my mom this morning, forgot I was doing it. Didn't even know what I was doing, didn't even know where I was. So it's, it's just...
We just wanted to bring it up that way to you guys again. And like I shared with you, Pat, the driving aspect of my, part of my job is driving, and I caught myself behind the wheel last weekend, and I had not slept. Didn't think anything of it, and something's going to happen, somebody's going to get hurt. These people that are having to go to work in the morning, I don't know how they're doing it, how they're getting any sleep at night, and being able to get on that road and not be distracted with driving, so.
It's, my understanding is that either the equipment is on or off, that there is no way to kind of, you know...
Oh, yeah, you can come to my house, and I can tell you.
Quiet it down.
Seth has personally told us that he has the ability to change what frequency it's at, you know, how...
Not how fast it drives.
He has the ability to change that, and he's choosing to turn it up at night so he can get more done while he's there versus leaving it.
We'll see when the silencer comes, if that's still going to be a thing, but like I said, I just want to put it out there in front of everyone, instead of just Pat and Michelle that I've been talking to on the side as a whole.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your concern. Okay, we will move on to announcements.
First item under announcements for this evening is the Magic of Aging, which is...
Excuse me.
Jim, do you want to introduce this one?
No, I don't.
Which is going to be sponsored by Ridgeview Sibley Medical Center and Sibley County VA Services. This will be on Tuesday, April sixteenth, here at the Arlington Community Center from nine AM to two fifteen. Tickets are ten dollars in advance and twelve dollars at the door. Second announcement is the Fourth Annual Sibley Community and Business Expo, which will be Monday, April twenty-second, at the Sibley East Elementary, located in Gaylord, from four to seven PM. If individuals are interested in having a booth at the expo, please contact Amy Newsom at (507) 237-4117. Third item is the Local Board of Appeal and Equalization Open... Third item is the Local Board of Appeal and Equalization Open Book Meeting, which will be Thursday, April twenty-fifth, from three to eight PM at the Sibley County Courthouse located in Gaylord. This is an opportunity for anybody who has questions about the valuation to do, to have some discussion in a less formal situation and talk with the assessor regarding that value. Fourth item is the National Prescription Drug Takeback, which is being held at the Arlington Police Department on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, from ten in the morning until two in the afternoon for any prescription drugs that are no longer being used. This is a safe way to dispose of those. The Arlington Logo Design Contest is currently underway, and it's open until May fifteenth, encouraging residents and other individuals who have an artistic flair to go ahead and help us put together the City of Arlington logo, so. We have already received a couple of entries, proud to say. So we encourage others to put, put their creative minds to thought and help us to come up with a Arlington logo. The Cancer Cruise is being scheduled for Saturday, May eighteenth. This will be held at the Four Seasons Park from nine AM, at which time the five K Fun Run and Walk starts. Then there'll be a car show at St. Paul's Lutheran Church at eleven AM. And then the cruise will be departing Arlington at four PM and will conclude with a hog roast in Green Isle at five. So that's the Cancer Cruise, Saturday, May eighteenth. Last but not least, we have the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference, which will be held in Duluth, June twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth. Any council members that are interested in participating should let administration know the early bird fee expires at the end of the month, so.
Any questions on the announcements? Hearing none, move on to communications.
Council members, I know that we have not talked about this previously, but I just wanted to be sure that you were informed that the City of Arlington did receive another Tree City designation for the work that we did in two thousand and eighteen. This will be the twelfth year, twelfth consecutive year that the city is being awarded the Tree City designation. As you can see back in the corner here, we have something showing all of our achievements with regards to Tree City. We did receive one, and we will get display board, I believe, next year if we receive another Tree City designation, so we can continue to be proud and show our accomplishments with regards to that, so. That was just an announcement to make you aware of. The next item is the March Building Report. As you can see from your packet, it's kind of an exciting time. We have our first home. Couple of homes that are planned to be built here in Arlington. We had a total of seven permits that were, were pulled. Three of those are for proposed new homes, one of which is the Wayne and Louise Quast, which is currently underware, underway or will be soon. These new buildings all benefited from the SAC and WAC waiver program, which is something that the EDA came up with to encourage individuals to build homes, so. Also looking at Dave Seiwick, who will be looking at building a couple of homes on the north side of town, so. Are there any questions regarding?
The Sepkirk construction got the WAC and SAC fee? I don't re, the program?
Correct.
Okay. I don't remember seeing that. That's what I was asking.
Actually, Wayne Quast, I think, stopped in for it, didn't he?
He, yes, all, all three of them did.
Yeah.
Did qualify for it, so.
So that's just running through administration until we hit a certain number before it comes back to the council, or?
Basically, the council authorized the EDA to issue up to three of them, and so now it has expired. And we will be talking under New Business about going ahead and transitioning that to be a council decision going forward.
I, I just didn't remember seeing that property coming forward at the EDA meeting, so that's why I was wondering.
The Seiwick?
That one I, no, that one we seen come through. I was wondering if the Sepkirk one.
The Quast.
I thought you said he had stopped shortly before the first of the year.
Yeah, that was in two thousand, he came in two thousand and eighteen.
So he was actually the first one that got it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Just an update on the Seiwick building permits. The surveyors were out staking out the houses on Seventh Heaven Northwest and on Olive Street. So I'm assuming as soon as the snow is gone, they're going to start digging.
It'd be a nice thing to see some new houses in Arlington.
Pardon?
It'll be a nice thing, just that hasn't happened for a few years.
For a long time, yeah. One of them's right across the street from my house, so I can keep an eye on them.
I'm sure you will.
They'll appreciate that. Got to have a neighborhood watch.
The next item is just an update from People Services in terms of the work that they completed in February. As you can see, there are a total of five. Gopher State One Call locates. People Services goes, will go out and will locate pipes and different things that are underground. When they were here last, there was discussion with the council about purchasing a piece of equipment, which helped them more accurately to identify where those, those lines are. So they did purchase that piece of equipment and are very happy with it. So thank you to the council for allowing them to go ahead with doing that. It makes them more efficient in their jobs. There were seven requests for services. Six of them were for water meter changeouts, which is a good thing. We're making great progress in terms of trying to get some of the older meters changed out. Our hope is that we can possibly get that all accomplished this summer and be done with that. They worked on the emergency backup generators. They also responded to a water main break on Shamrock Drive. So there was some additional work that was required. They had Litsau doing some work out there to deal with a broken shut-off valve. Also, staff did a great job. They had the final clarifier one that was cleaned up. They had it turned off at the time that we had some serious water issues. And staff were quick to get out here, get everything shut back, or turned back on. And so kudos to both Lee and some of the new staff that we have through People Services. I also met with the MPCA to talk about the phosphorus and the chloride limits. I currently have a, a letter that I'll have Mayor Nagel sign, which will be our request to the MPCA for a five-year extension on the chloride limits. With our current water treatment facility, we are able to meet the phosphorus requirements. The chloride, however, is another story, and we're going to have to work at that over a period of time. What we'll do in the short term is probably look at trying to educate residents about water softeners and how they can be more efficient in their use, so. If you take a look at the third page of the report, you can see there the average daily water pumped in two thousand and nineteen is just slightly higher than it was in two thousand and eighteen. And likewise, the daily wastewater pumped has been slightly higher than what it was in two thousand and eighteen, so. Once we start getting significant waterfalls, you may sign, or rainfalls, you may see some significant spikes. But if we can stay consistent, that's our goal, is not to have those spikes. Any questions on People Services? I also was happy to go down with Lee Forsier, and we did receive an award from the state for doing a great job of managing our facility and, and water, so.
And what organization was that from?
That was from the MPCA.
MPCA?
Yes. And then the last item that we have underneath on your, on your desk there is a March Financial Report showing expenditures. As you can see, I've highlighted those items that were higher than usual in red. At this point, we're about twenty-five percent of the year. So these are all expenditures through the end of March. Looking down the list, you can see that Buildings and Plant were at thirty-three percent. That's because of gas utilities. Obviously, we, we have more expense during the winter because we're heating things. But then as spring, summer, and fall come around, we don't have those expenses. So being at thirty-three percent is certainly not a concern for us at this time. Looking down at Public Works, as you can imagine, we are getting hit with some increased costs for snow plowing. We have gone through our budget quite a bit this year for plowing. We've also had additional costs for gas utilities, gas for running vehicles, and also we have had increased part-time costs for help with snow plowing. So that's being driven in a large part by the snow, which really is out of our control. So I do appreciate, I know that Kirby has been sensitive to this issue, and especially in this last snowfall, has tried to do things to not blow up that budget, which is high. Street lighting, again, here we've got some electricity as well as some of the, the heat heating utilities that have driven that one to be higher. Going down to economic development, we're at thirty-four percent for the year there simply because we received the third and fourth quarter billings for Amy Newsom's time in two thousand and nineteen. So what will happen is at the end of two thousand and, well, here shortly, those bills will go back and be put into two thousand and eighteen, so everything will correct itself. It's just a matter of time before that happens. Looking at the second page, looking at our enterprise funds. Again, a lot of these increases or higher percentages are driven by the fact that we've just completed the winter season. We've had a lot of heating costs. If you look at the water, we've had additional costs this year because we're working on the two thousand and nineteen street and utility improvement project, so Jason Femerite has put in a significant amount of time putting together those plans. Also, if you will recall, in two thousand and eighteen, towards the end of the year, we were working on some different plans with the EDA to acquire some property for future industrial park. Looking down, you can see on our electrical, we are at twenty-six percent. There again, some of that work is related to the engineering costs that are associated with our electrical system. Cloud Val, Minnesota Valley Electric Co., they do some work to maintain and make sure that our electrical system is working efficiently. With regards to the SWARM sewer, we've had some, some construction that we've had to do just to keep the system going. That's been primarily Litsau doing related work to digging up and helping us to make some repairs. As you look at the last page, you can see we've got some improvement construction funds. The two thousand and seventeen Improvement Construction Fund will be finalized here, hopefully in the spring. We do have an agreement with Char to come back and take a look at a couple of different issues, which includes the, the fire hall, the caulking on the apron of the fire hall, as well as take a look at some of the turf issues to ensure that the grass is growing. So hopefully we'll be able to finalize that out. And then with regards to the two thousand and nineteen Improvement Construction Fund, those are expenses that we are incurring now to prepare for possible project. Looking at our debt service funds, you can see that a number of those have already been paid off in terms of their annual payment. The two thousand and twelve Geo Improvement Fund is something that has been taken care of with that final payment of eight, a hundred and eighty-two thousand, or I'm sorry, that final payment of two hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So that's maybe one that you were talking about earlier, Michelle, about do we have any other funds that are, are being closed down, so. Are there any questions on anything which we have covered?
I guess not. All right, thanks, Pat. At this time, we have the Police Department report. Chief Pedersen, welcome.
So I guess I'll start with what I normally do, our month-to-date report. You guys have all been provided a copy as well. The highlights are March of two thousand and nineteen, we had two hundred and seventy calls, and March of two thousand and eighteen, we were at twenty, or two hundred and fifteen. I'm sorry, Ross. You're even busier. So of those, I mean, we could go through each and every one of them, but again, officers are staying busy, and we're going to have an increase again for our nuisance complaints and our response to spring yard cleanups. At some point, I'd like to meet with Kurt with the newspaper again and get another article in the paper stressing that everybody clean up their yards, because we're going to start coming around and doing some inspections and stuff too. Just to continue, we had some training cancellations this last week with the snowstorm that we had. The EMS group training that the Fire Department was trying to coordinate was with the ambulance and ourselves. They ended up, I think they're going to reschedule that for some other date and time. It was supposed to be a mock of a car crash and an extrication treatment and that type of thing. I was going to attend the Chief of Police Convention, which was actually started yesterday, today, in St. Cloud, and I chose not to go with Bailey starting. I wanted to be here for her field training that she's doing. So we'll figure that out maybe next year. We'll catch that one. In addition to some training that's been going on, the county has been great to help us with our firearms training. So we've got Bailey, and then they did the rest of us as well in a group. So we've all gotten requalified again just last week. The county again is sponsoring our defensive tactics training, so we're saving some money with that as well. The only cost that goes with that is our time commitment. So we've, we've utilized the schedule that we have together with our training situation and being able to save. So I'm not paying out overtime for that as well, so that's been working out very well. As far as the human trafficking seminar that was put on at the high school just this last week, myself and Pat Nienaber attended that. James was working that night also, so he had showed up for just a little while. And it was, it was actually a really good training. I give kudos to the Niklet County Sheriff's Department for their investment and the commitment that they have stuck in that, not just time-wise, but the, the financial is unbelievable. And they're making a huge impact pretty much around the whole state of Minnesota and training other officers and following through with that type of stuff. The other training that I attended was with a couple of firemen on the pipeline safety, and that was just at the end of March, as we had an opportunity to in some months past. I didn't quite know what the association might be, but I, I realize now that we have some pipelines that are fairly close to the city, and they could come into a mutual aid situation where we need to know kind of what's going on and, and what potential there is there for some situations that could arise. So that was a very beneficial training also, and it was free and included a meal, so.
Bonus.
Yeah.
Jim wasn't there.
I didn't tell him about the meal.
He missed a free meal, Jim.
Said they had a free meal.
Free meal. What? I missed a free meal?
So I think that covers the training. In regards to the snowstorm, I don't know if any of you had any complaints or not, but you probably didn't, because we didn't write any tickets. Kirby and I talked about it, and we both decided that with the, the quick melt that was going to be happening and his need to minimize his plowing, we did hold back on any and all citations or anything that was enforcement-wise on that last snowstorm.
We, we did have one complaint that you didn't ticket.
That we didn't ticket, and it was the one vehicle, I suppose, that was parked plod around.
You did have one person that pretended.
And that vehicle was actually related to a narcotics arrest. And the person was required to leave the vehicle there because they didn't have a license, and that vehicle was moved today. So it took a little while, but we got it out of there. We started our CIP planning with our financial stuff with Pat, and so I'm kind of trying to work on getting through that and thinking ahead of some costs that might be coming. The garage is painted.
Kudos to the guys who get all the time to paint it.
Well, and we did have some volunteer work, too, from Tom Pomplun and Vicky and her daughters, and also from a gentleman in town here that was donating some time as well. So huge thank you to both of those, or all of those guys. The, there is a need for some shelves to get put up, but we'll work on that when we get to it. It is usable, functional, heated, and we're really enjoying it, so thank you for that.
Little electric heater worked, worked well in there?
It did work well over the winter, yep.
Good.
Yep, so. Think I have that. The one final topic is a, well, there's two actually topics. The, with the implementation of our new officer, it's going to allow me to add a shift. And with the addition of that shift, I'm going to take Officer Jankowski and move her to a day shift type situation. So I've met with the, I haven't met officially, but we've been talking with the school, and they are totally open to the idea of having Officer Jankowski in the school pretty much as often as we can put her there. We've had a couple fights over the last couple weeks, there's been a couple other situations that have gone on. And I think it can be a huge asset to the city, to the school, if we can have Sarah spending some time up there. So just kind of an idea of what I'm thinking about with that. Obviously, I need to fill her eighty hours in a two-week pay period. So I'd be looking at doing a rotation, rotation shift, similar to what she's doing right now. So you work Monday, Tuesday, off Wednesday, Thursday, and then you would work Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And the benefits to that are going to be we'll have a day shift Saturday, Sunday coverage as well, so we can help fill with many things. And there's other duties that I'm going to ask Sarah to be doing on those days, too, that it might be a little quieter in the morning. We've got some revision of some policies that we're going to hit pretty hard. Again, the evidence, just administrative things that she can be a huge help with as well and help lift the load off of Vicky. We can get that scanning and everything done that's been sitting on the back burner for so long, and I'm really looking forward to the progress that we're going to be able to be making with that. Along with the every other week and shift, the hours I'm thinking will be nine to seven, ten-hour shift still, or an eight to six, and then we'll be able to utilize her position as a fill for any vacations over the summer. Or I'll be able to move officers around to have the primary coverage being the, still the evening shifts. But I'm thinking it's going to be pretty beneficial to more coverage and less time with the county. On that topic, we did get a bill from the county for two thousand eighteen for their hours or their service that they did for the city of on-call time, and they detailed two calls that they helped us with. And I think the total cost was under, Pat, do you remember what that was? I don't have it in front of me. It was under a hundred and twenty-five bucks.
It was minimal.
So we, working together with the county, I think we did quite well for two thousand eighteen. And, you know, we may have to have those two or three calls like we did in two thousand eighteen again, but if that's as bad as it gets, I think we're doing pretty good. I believe that's all.
I noticed you had four scams, what do scams involve? Is that internet scams?
Yes.
Always internet scams? I thought maybe it was door-to-door salesman or something like that, but.
Pretty much either internet or telephone.
Okay.
So people are receiving phone calls and they're, they're being asked to go and deliver money. We unfortunately did have, one of our citizens was a victim to a fairly substantial loss. It was actually reported by the, the company that sells these Google, these cards, because it was an excessive amount of money that was being presented on them. And then, once you call the number back and you give them the PIN number on this card that you've put money on, it's instantly gone. They cash it in and, and to trace it is pretty difficult, but. I, I got to give Officer Knoxen some kudos, because technology-wise, he's pretty savvy, and he's trying to work that case a little bit to see if he can identify who the subscriber of the, the person, the recipient of the money is. So he's had some luck on some other technology investigations, and we'll see where this one takes us as well. But at this point, yeah, we can't stress enough that if anybody gets a call that seems too good to be true, it's too good to be true.
Always is.
Yeah, and don't give your social security, don't give your birthdate. Just, it, it's best not even answering the phone anymore, unless you know who you're talking to.
So what can they do if, if, if I were to get a call, what should I do? I mean, not give out my information, but is there anything else that I should do? Should I call the police department, or should I?
Well, my preference is you hang up. My preference is you don't talk to them or, or even risk giving them any bit of information to call us and report it. There are so many of these going on every day that there's no way for us to, to follow up on ninety-nine percent of them. There's a website that the state has put up called MinScams, it's M-N-S-C-A-M-S dot org. And we direct people to go to that, and you can read it, and it explains majority of the scams that are going on across the country. But for every, you know, twenty that there are, there's two more that pop up the next day. And Vicky actually just got an email that was sent to her from Bank of America, I think it was, and it, it looked really legit. But it came from this, this odd name, and it says, "Just download this program and enter this code." I'm like, "No." It was good on her to catch that and, and not to respond to it. So many things are going on out in the technology world that people are taking advantage of others, it's, yeah.
Is the IRS scam still going on?
Oh, constantly. The IRS scam, the, the grandma in jail scam, send me money, it's whatever they can.
They've been around a long time.
Yeah, whatever they can get you over, so.
Okay, anything else for Chief?
John, just a question. I, I would have asked you this earlier, but from our previous discussion, weren't we talking about trying to get the school involved in, in helping us to pay for kind of a school resource officer? And is this kind of jumping into it?
Well, I'm, I'm not, so I've talked to Mr. Hampden, and I've talked to the principal, and this is not a school resource officer designation. We are not giving them absolute Sarah. She's going to be doing police work, she's just going to be doing it from up there. To me, it'll be a pretty good gauge to just get an idea of what kind of effect having an officer can be in the school. It kind of gives them a chance to kick the tires, for lack of a better word, and see how it can work. I, I am planning on meeting with them this week, or at the end of this week, or the beginning of next week, just to try and, and sort out kind of what it looks like. Sarah is going to have to respond to calls outside of the school. It's not going to be in my, in my best estimate of the, it's not even an assignment, I don't want to call it that, the test, the trial run, that we just kind of let them know what we can give them, just by being up there. So I need to fill hours. I either fill them on the street with Sarah, or I can put her where the most populated building in the county is, other than Michael Foods, and here in, in town, and I think it's going to have the biggest effect on, on the day. So Jim is not opposed to having a discussion about next year actually being involved in more of a structured type of, of agreement, but I think we need to work on that maybe over the summer. Again, my, my end goal here is just to kind of get the foot in the door and, and, and just help out, so.
And then just one more thing also on the, and I'm assuming that'll be just kind of to fill in some of those, you know, some of those slow times with the administrative type, the scanning and different things like that. Do you want to have a police officer doing that, or would you?
Well, some of, some of the things that, some of the things that are beneficial with like the policy review and, and updating is, I think it's helpful to get the officer's input on, you know, how we're doing things. I think the last policy update is nineteen ninety-three. So I'd like to get that moving along, and then we can push it forward to the police committee for review as well. I guess I don't want to waste the police committee's time and have them sitting down and going through page by page by page of, of everything, if, if we can utilize our time for some of that as well, so. I was just thinking one other thing, too, about that, and it slipped me. Next time.
Yeah, anything else? Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. We will move on to ordinances and resolutions, resolution eighteen dash twenty nineteen, accepting a donation.
Council members, we are very fortunate to have a donation today from Sharon Holasek. And you may wonder if that name sounds familiar. Sharon typically makes a donation to a police department and chose this year to make that donation to the city of Arlington. So it just happens to be that her, that's her granddaughter, or granddaughter is starting as a police chief. There was no connection to her getting the job and us receiving this donation, right, John?
I don't think so.
So thank you to her for that, for thinking of Arlington. This will be put into a police department fund for future use.
I'd like to introduce resolution eighteen twenty, eighteen dash twenty nineteen, accepting a donation of three hundred dollars from Sharon Holasek and designate it gets used for the Arlington Police Department.
I'll second it.
Resolution eighteen dash twenty nineteen introduced by Councilmember Batch, second by Councilmember Haddelstead, and that is a resolution accepting a donation designating its use, the use it would be to, for the Arlington Police Department, and that is a donation of three hundred dollars from Sharon Holasek. Any questions? Hearing none, vote by roll call, Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Batch.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Haddelstead.
Yes.
All voting in favor and unopposed, the resolution is adopted.
The next resolution nineteen two thousand nineteen is to approve EDA facade improvement loan for the Hip Hop Family Shop located at three thirty-nine West Main Street. This is a program through the EDA in which they will match, provide a fifty percent match to businesses that will take steps to improve their appearance on Main Street. The EDA committee is recommending approval, and the total cost again is one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Introduce resolution nineteen dash twenty nineteen, approving EDA facade improvement loan for Hip Hop Family Shop.
Second.
Resolution nineteen dash twenty nineteen introduced by Councilmember Cowell, second by Councilmember Batch. That is a resolution approving terms of a loan to Hip Hop Family Shop from the Arlington EDA facade improvement loan program for a project at three thirty-nine Main Street. Any questions, discussion? Is it, is a permit necessary for that project or not? I'm not one to know what a permit is necessary for.
That's a nice one, question.
If they're going to be reciting that facade, which they are, the upper portion of that building.
I, I believe it probably would be, but I can certainly confirm that.
Okay, just make sure that they don't get stuck with, or get caught in between. Okay, any other questions, comment? Vote by roll call, Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Haddelstead.
Yes.
Councilmember Batch.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
All voting in favor and unopposed, the resolution is adopted. There is no unfinished business, move on to new business, item number twelve, approve or deny? And that would be a proposal from Nancy Mathwick, Lions president. Nancy, you want to come forward and share your message to the council?
Basically, I did outline it in the letter that I hope all of you have a chance to look at. But as you know, we partnered with you back in two thousand seventeen, sixteen and seventeen, to refurbish the, the building. And when we utilized it and had people from out of town, they're, they're just really impressed with the brightness, especially if they had been in there before and knew how dark it was because of the lack of windows and everything. The only thing that we have heard from our members is that it needs a little bit of brightening up, because everything's pretty neutral, the walls are neutral, you know, the floors. And about a year ago, or, you know, nine months ago, we had talked about possibly, wondering if we could do some sort of mural or something in there. And it didn't get handled now until just recently, but we had Laura Beck, who also did the two murals out here in the hallway, come and look at it the other day. She gave us an estimate on what it would cost. Her idea for it is that when you walk in those south doors, so where the two double doors are, and it would be on the wall directly across from that, she would do, she would incorporate the Four Seasons, in which she thought was appropriate because she noticed the Four Seasons park name when she drove in. But she would incorporate that into a mural around the window. It would not be a full floor to ceiling. We did talk about the fact that some of the other areas in the building that we had initially talked about, that's where the chairs are stored and, you know, things would be possibly knocking up against the, the mural. And I do have, if you're curious as to the color scheme, she, she kind of goes with the flow, the day of is what I found out from her. So she couldn't really give us a diagram of what she would be doing, but if you're interested, these are the, the types of colors she would use. She would flow it from one season to the next, not have a lot of busy work in there, not have a lot of bright colors, although there may be some brightness to the sky or, you know, some of the trees and that. But it would just add some color to the building without really being greatly detracting, you know, because it's so bright. I mean, it wouldn't be like the, the one out here in the hallway, it wouldn't be that bright, it would be more subtle. So we're, all we're asking actually from the council is the permission to do it. We would be, you know, we would pick up the cost of her. She could do it in one day, she said it would take her about six hours. She does charge a hundred dollars an hour, so we would be, you know, paying for that. She said she'd probably be in there seven hours because it takes her some time to set up and to clean up, but she doesn't charge for that, she doesn't charge until she starts doing the actual painting. And I think that's all I have, any questions on it or any?
No, that's a great idea.
Like you said, some brightness or some some variety there, there's all white walls or all beige walls that you're looking at in there, so.
We, the one thing that um we did talk about also was, and the type of paint she uses, she said really um is very durable, she uses a more expensive paint. And um because I had asked about, you know, there's a lot of use in there and what happens if, you know, there's fa- there are families in there and maybe the kids aren't watched real well and they're coloring on it and and um she would give us some guidelines as far as washing some of that off, you know, what to use and what not to use on there. Um but she, there is a, there is a uh a sealer or something she could put on it, but it's very, very expensive. And she didn't recommend it at this point, you know, so if we, you know, if some child decided to help color it sometime in the future, then we may have to do something else, but.
Well, typically there's attendants in there when there's, you know, kids that are sleeping.
I'm thinking more when it's rented out.
Right, yeah, so hopefully.
Plus I notice, yeah, yeah.
Look nice.
So, and the other thing, this doesn't have to do with the proposal, but um Mayor Nagel had been asking for a sign for us, some of you have seen it. To designate the building because it's now the Lions Center and some people have been curious as if they're in this, we have three of these. One of these um used to be in the shelter behind the hospital because that was a Lions project at that time, but it was taken down years ago when when the shelter was painted and that. We were, we um, this has been touched up somewhat, but it needs a better job, so this was also something we thought maybe we could check with Laura on. Laura Lana, Lan- Lana.
Yeah.
Um on and um either that, this one or one of the other ones and just have a better, and it is metal and it is designed for outside, so.
Looks good.
Okay, good, and that would go on the same side with the double doors somewhere?
By the doors outside is what, yeah, you and I have talked about, so. Any other questions for me?
No.
Okay, thank you for considering it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you Nancy.
Thank you for the offer.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, if there are no more questions or comments, uh chair will entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve Nancy Mathwick's request for authorizing painting a mural inside the Lions Center and also putting the sign on the outside.
I'll second that.
Motion by council member Highland, second by council member Hattelstedt to approve Nancy Mather, Lions president, request for authorization to paint a mural inside the Lions Center as well as um mounting the uh sign on the outside of the building. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you Nancy.
Yes, thank you.
Item thirteen, approve or deny EDA's recommendation to transfer whack and sack waiver decisions to the city council.
Council members, this is a a recommendation you had previously approved up to three, those have been uh all granted at this point, so uh if you care to continue to entertain uh individuals who would like to have that option, that is certainly up to you. You could certainly do so on a case by case review of requests. And where that funding co- came from uh could be determined at that time as well, so. One option is to say no, EDA keep doing it, however, I think they have run out of money, so you know, they would probably be asking for additional funds if you want them to continue to allow uh sack, whack and sack waivers.
I think typically it all comes back here anyhow, I mean, we always have the final say. EDA makes a recommendation, it comes here, we make the approval. I think it's just skipping that step or whatever. I think it's a great program, we got three coming up and building. Should try and find some money somewhere to keep it going.
I know there are very, I sat in the last EDA meeting and there are very favorable comments about the program that it, they thought it was doing some good and at least a jester for the city to uh try and get buildings started.
What's the cost of?
Pat, switch the cameras so we're fresh.
Forty-eight seventy-five dollars, something like that.
For for, oh that's for the three, right?
Ah it's each, it's more-
Each hook up.
Yeah, just shy of four thousand eight hundred something.
Try five thousand, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. A value of, so does that money, does the city take money and put it into those funds then? Or do we just, or is it a value of X amount of dollars, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, typically if we did get paid that money, it would go into those funds, meaning that we're not getting that money.
Okay.
It's not one-
Into the water and sewer fund.
We still have an account. We we still have funds in that area. We still have money in those funds or in that account, it's just not, we're not building up more into that account.
We're shorting it by little around five thousand dollars every time we, every time we approve it.
Yes, yes.
Every time we approve it.
Until the following year when they're all paying property taxes and they're paying, they're paying a, they're paying the bill every month to the city. So we do get that money all the way.
And they're going to the grocery store and hopefully they have kids at school.
They're shopping on Main Street, we get the money back easily.
It comes back.
I mean, I I think we need to keep on going with it, I think it's being, it's proven successful so far. Well, with that, I'll make a recommendation that we approve the um EDA's recommendation to transfer whack and sack waivers decisions to the city of uh city council, um and we can do that on a um
Case by case.
Case by case basis.
I'll second that.
Motion by council member Batch, second by council member Hattelstedt to approve the EDA's recommendation to uh transfer whack and sack waiver decisions to the city council on a case by case basis. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried unanimously. Item fourteen, approve or deny contracting with Flawless Finish LLC to paint the Arlington Library.
Council members, uh included in your packet were two quotes for uh painting the library, one from Flawless Finish for a cost of one thousand five hundred and ninety-five. The second quote from Legacy Painting LLC for one thousand eight hundred and ninety. Uh both uh uh painting businesses are from Arlington. Kathy Homie is making a recommendation to go ahead and proceed with uh Flawless Finish at one thousand five hundred and ninety-five. The money for carpeting as well as painting has been in the uh capital improvement plan in previous years.
I make a motion to approve uh contracting with Flawless Finish LLC to paint the Arlington Library for a cost of fifteen ninety-five.
Second.
Motion by council member Batch, second by council member Yashewski to approve the contr- approve contracting with Flawless Finish LLC to paint the Arlington Library for a total cost of one thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. And then I don't know if it's appropriate or not to add the FFA Wildflower Trail here, we did, we approved the agenda without that item, but um I think we could, I don't think anybody is gonna call us on the carpet for that.
Well, it's not gonna cost-
No, it isn't, it isn't, so.
And the other side is that they're gonna get, if they need to get started on it immediately to get those six months, we need to address it immediately.
I think we got suppliers of mulch and we got plenty of that.
We got plenty of that.
Yeah, we got all kinds of it. We'll have beautiful flowers on the trail.
Well, I'd like to make a motion then to um approve the um request-
FFA Wildflower Trail.
Uh Trailside Wildflower Project, um requested by St. Mary's Environmental Study Group at FFA and Larry Guzicki.
Second.
Motion by council member Batch, second by council member Hattelstedt to approve the FFA Wildlife or Wildflower Trail as proposed by uh I don't have the entities here, but St. Mary's is one of them.
FFA.
FFA and Larry Guzicki on behalf of the Arlington Flower Club. Is there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Moving to miscellaneous business, uh item number fifteen, council member Committee Updates. Are there any?
We had an EDA meeting on Monday, um last Monday, um using, that came before you, the whack and sack. Uh wanted to move it up here since there was no more money in the funds or in the account.
Sure, you have the money now, you want us to?
So we, we were broke, so we figured um two, you know, two groups doing the same work though or whatever technically all the times as well, so. Remember what else came over that meeting, Tom?
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Okay, any other reports? Open it up for open discussion if there's anything anyone wants to bring up.
Just one thing on what some Amy said, if if the workers at North and Giant are telling them something different than we're being told, I think that should be relayed to to them. To make sure that that's you know, either not happening or if that's true, you know, we-
It sounded like they had some in- inside information from one of the employees.
She said it was the manager.
It's the manager, yeah.
And the manager would be-
What'd he say?
Well, it said that they turn it up at night, cause it's so they can work faster.
So you can-
Well, his production rate probably goes up, yeah.
I mean, if, and if that's contrary to what we've been told, I mean, that's not right, we're trying to do everything, we're giving them time. I mean, we don't have to, we're giving them three, what is it, three months?
Three months.
You know, we don't, and if they're not telling us the truth, then and they're-
No, they're compounding the problem.
No, they're making the problem worse because they're going faster, making more noise.
Right.
Well, I know we've brought this up to them uh at least once or twice before that there's people saying that there's more noise being made at different times of the day and they keep saying, no, it's either running or it's not running. They can't vary the speed or anything, so that's something they are not being-
If we can believe them.
Consistent with, yeah.
How do we know?
Yeah.
And I don't, you know, perhaps one of the things that we can do, I'm not sure that that would be considered part of the scope, but when when the engineers are doing the testing to confirm that they've got, you know, that they're below the threshold limit, perhaps we could ask them also to verify that that equipment can only be operated on or off.
Right.
That there's no-
No variable speed.
Yeah, exactly, and if if it is a variable speed, that they have to meet the regulation at the highest speed, the highest speed.
But didn't, didn't Josh one time tell us that they had variable speed motors in there? I thought he did.
Well, they had put an attachment on or something.
At at one time they had replaced the motor with a variable speed moor- motor. And then they encountered problems with that because it wasn't pushing the product through fast enough and it was causing fires. So they switched out the variable speed with and put the old motor back on.
So if that's true, then he can't be speeding it up.
Well, that's what-
But that, it's different though, I mean, I would say that it's different because I hear it too, it's different, different sound.
I know this morning I walked outside and that's the loudest I have ever heard it, like almost fifty percent more.
So you you don't think it's the wind, I mean, wind blowing from a different direction or at a different, different speed?
Seems to me that when it's around twenty-five, thirty degrees and the humidity's a little higher, the sound, the sound is better.
Oh yeah, it travels, yeah.
I I really think it makes a difference, but that's immaterial, he's gotta get silence around there and he has to get his address.
He's gotta get quiet down no matter what, yeah.
And his deadline's coming soon.
Yeah.
Very soon.
I would say that we really need to stand firm.
Yes.
Because it's, we've given them three months.
Yeah, I would say when it-
We've been a good neighbor.
When the time comes and if it doesn't meet the requirement, turn it off.
Can we tell him Ross that you cannot run anymore after May fourth until you come into compliance?
Well, that's what, we're having a staff meeting this week about that to look at the options. That could be one of them, yeah.
That might be the only one he understands.
Yeah.
And when is May fourth? Which, I mean, what day, a week is it?
Oh, it's a Monday, Sunday.
It's a Monday, no, it's a-
No.
It's a Sunday.
Friday or Saturday.
A Saturday.
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 It's a Saturday.
So I guess the other, I mean, should we, this is our last meeting before that.
Well, I mean, I suppose, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, May fourth rolls around and I suppose business is done on Monday though technically, right?
Well, I'm just wondering if we should get together before then to try to-
That's what the staff meeting was gonna, we're getting uh Chief Patterson and Ross, myself and and Pat together. Just so we know that when May fifth comes, what are we, what are we gonna be doing?
Yes.
So we don't flounder around not knowing what we're going to be doing.
Okay.
The residents aren't going to put up with-
No, no, not at all.
Them continuing to make that noise past May fourth.
Yeah.
They're not, we think we have problems now.
Right.
Let that date slide.
I agree, I agree.
We're gonna have to hold firm, or as firm as we can.
We are also having some issues with regards to stockpiling of product outdoors.
Is he still hauling in there? I was told eight semis went in there.
They're not supposed to be, um but there, there is a quantity of potatoes that's outside, so.
So he could be.
A letter has been sent requesting.
But we're not, are we monitoring it or?
Yes, yep, we are.
Well, once the weather starts warming up, what's gonna happen is that we're really gonna find some orders soon. Other than the chips that I smell, french fries.
What is he normally, he's got another place to stockpile his stuff, correct?
He does, he has, what he refers to as a a landing landing station where he supposedly takes the product, but due to some of the flooding issues, that is currently he's unable to access that, so a request was made as to whether or not he could stockpile uh some stuff on the pad, uh to which we responded, that would require getting a interim use permit, which would take forty-five days, and we suggested that he take a look at other options.
But instead he started piling it up.
And the what I was told was that somebody before getting permission from management, somebody had unloaded a trailer there and that, you know, he was gonna take care of it, but. We have-
I was gonna drive down, in fact, tonight I might have for the meeting. Cause the guy that told me that eight semis went in there wouldn't be telling me that if it wasn't true.
Yeah.
I'm putting it on like on the corner.
I'd have to drive back there, find out then, I'm gonna-
On a, on a pad.
I wonder how many truckloads they can process in a day if they run twenty-four hours a day, maybe they do eight.
I do, but if he's still hauling him there, he's not supposed to be.
And dumping it outside, you mean?
Yeah, he's not going to be dumping it on the slab.
No, he's not supposed to be dumping it outside, but you said, somebody told you eight semi loads went in there.
Correct.
It could have been what he processed, he may be, they may be backed in, unloaded inside.
Well, then there shouldn't be sitting, sitting on the slab.
Yeah, well, they should-
I'll know more.
Cleaning that up, I agree, yeah. Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by council member Hattelstedt, or motion by councilman Hattelstedt, second by council member Yashewski to adjourn the meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, meeting's adjourned at seven fifty-nine.
Just before eight o'clock, good timing there, Rich.
Perfect.
Still an idiot.
Alright.
Good to have you back, Tom.
Thank you, it's good to see you.
Oh, yeah.
I knew if I didn't say something, Jim, you would missing out on a meal like that.
Yeah, you know, Chief was talking kinda soft, so I was catching-
Yeah.
Not quite all of it. Boy, I miss a free meal like that, wow. Hey, do you know what that um golden age of aging is about, what the agenda is and all? golden age of aging is about, what the agenda is at all or?
Oh, that's been all over the place, yeah. Was it in your pack, I think, wasn't it?
Yeah, yep.
In your packet.
It was.
There was a sheet in there.
I didn't see that.
Here, I'll share it with you. There you go.
Ah, yeah.